All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the, we're gonna get this first work session meeting of January 7th, 2016. It seems like 2015, but I'm in a hurry, and just before we blink an eye, 2016 is gonna be over. Like I said in the past, it's casual. We're in a casual meeting here, so we're gonna take it from there. Item for discussion, now that everybody's got the, got the list of what we want to discuss on the agenda. I'm gonna crank it up with the number one item, which is the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule for 2016. And I'm sure the papers, in all the powers that be, would like to know what that schedule is.
You will vote on this in your January 21 maybe?
That is correct. That is correct. And we can, I don't have a problem with the, with Pickens County Progress or Smoke Centers getting a copy of this, but we will be voting on this. And this is the schedule for the work session schedule, as well as the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule for this coming year. Already done, so we'll give you all that one. And really, it's still pretty well the same. The first Thursday of every month is the works, works session at 10 o'clock. And the third Thursday at 5:30 is the county meeting. We're not, we're not changing that policy. All right, any?
No dates been changed as far as the holidays or anything like that on the view?
I have a list of holidays in my computer. It's just the regular holidays like we have every year that we handle. They're the same, nothing ever.
But we ain't have changed none of these for?
No, no. Nothing at all been changed.
Yeah, we're down to a little bit.
Well, we'll count this time.
Phil, do you, I know you guys have everything in the school board as any present. Do you think any is gonna conflict with any school board meetings you have? Becky, you guys got any other? On this, okay. That brings us down to item number two, under the airport. What, under the airport?
You just tell me now, we're gonna talk about the airport.
Airport, okay. Well, I think, David Howell's gonna be here and talk about it. They were gonna, he's gonna bring up about the, about the hangars and part of the business plan and all they had set up for that. I think he's gonna, that must be, he's gonna, must be wait till our, till our other meeting, but, or meet with each one of us separate on what he's planning to do for the future for the airport. I think he's trying to get us updated on that one, but anyway, we'll just put that on hold for right now, in case he comes in. That brings us down to item three, under the CCR monitoring memo. Richard, I'm gonna turn it over to you, if that sits in regard to the water, well, not water purification, but the monitoring of the water in our creeks here.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So items three through seven can be lumped in together. I give you the bottom line. The state EPD is working with several counties in North Georgia to have us complete water quality monitoring based on a study and plan. The study was, and partnership, was first put into place about 10 years ago. The plan was completed in 2013, this watershed protection plan. And it essentially said, Pickens County needs to implement water quality monitoring at two creek sites. Currently, we have one creek site that we are doing some water quality monitoring through a contract with the consultant, Advanced Environmental. And they also do some water quality monitoring at the old landfill site on Jones Mountain Road. And so, Advanced Environmental, as proposed here, in all these items, would still stick with the land, the former landfill site. They do water quality monitoring, they do methane monitoring, but for these two sites, Long Swamp Creek and Rebus Mountain Road, and Sharp Mountain Creek at Daddy Mill Road, which are identified in the 2013 watershed protection plan. We have a proposal by CCR Environmental to conduct water quality monitoring for the two sites, so that we will be in full compliance. In 2015, Advanced Environmental, for just the one creek site, charged us 10,000, approximately $10,200. For two sites, we're getting a bundle deal with CCR Environmental for approximately $16,500.
Is that them furnishing the equipment to go at the second site?
That would, I believe so. Right, they've, yeah, we can go over the specifics, and I'll, I'll look back through here before the January 21st meeting, and I'll confirm that with them.
Let me, let me explain to Commissar Becky and Mr. Barnes, the, the history behind this. Back in, I think it started back in 99 or 2000, when the water quality for North Georgia was being brought forth from the DNR and EPD. The one at Sharp Mountain, I'm sorry, the one at Long Swamp Creek, Site Number 006, that monitoring station has been in for quite some time. That has already been there. The one at Sharp Mountain Creek at Daddy Mill is a new one, that under those requirements back at that time, Pickens County had agreed to partner with them to put that in. My timeframe could be a little off. What it is, it all, it all derives on EPD and DNR and water quality that's going south of here, and at all bases to the point that if Pickens County wants to, or any other county that's been involved in this process, all of North Georgia above I-20 has been involved in this process. If we wanna go in and get a water withdrawal permit for more water withdrawal permits, a new water withdrawal permit, anything that has to do with water withdrawal permits, anything that has to do with waste treatment and, and water going back into these creeks, this will help, what we've been doing since, since that time till now, will help expedite the permitting phase, because we have partnered with these groups to make this happen for the future. That's kind of what, Richard, that is version of how this thing come about and how long it's been going on. Is that pretty well correct, Richard?
Right. CCR would be responsible for the collection, analysis, long-term monitoring, and annual reporting of water quantity, gauges operated by others/NRCs, water quality and ecological conditions at the two sites. So, we get confirmation about the actual equipment. And at the last minute, we did have a potential bidder. And so, between now and January 21st, Catherine Fox with Fox Environmental, who also, just like CCR Environmental, has a good reputation and has completed projects in North Georgia, she emailed me and said, you know, "There may be some cost savings. I may or may not be lower than CCR Environmental. Will you give me the opportunity to submit a proposal?" And so, obviously, I said, "Sure, you know, if there's potential savings." So, if she gets the proposal in by the end of the day on the 14th, and if staff has adequate time to review a completed proposal, and if there is cost savings potentially, then, you know, we, we may submit that to you. But at this time, CCR Environmental is the submitted proposal.
Have you heard what you've been going to these meetings? And you give, give everyone here heads. Just Norman, Mr. Pope had retired back in November. Richard has, has helped take up the gauntlet on, on going to a lot of these water resources with Limestone Valley, RC&amp;D. I'm gonna drag him into that. And then, of course, with the Upper Etowah, Lake Atun, Upper Etowah projects that Norman's been involved in, and with the one on, what's one on the, on the east side? That Etowah over there? Because we're in two different watersheds, and I can't remember which ones are there. Anyway, Richard's kind of taking that gauntlet on to keep, keep a suppressive situation on what's going on with future for water quality in North Georgia. Pickens County just one amongst many other counties that's involved in this. I think even Bartow County, where you come from, with Chicago's even involved in this project. So, Richard, thank you for taking that issue on and, and bringing it, bringing it forward, where we can go ahead and maybe get this thing laid to rest eventually, and work out who we're gonna get to monitor the, these water sites. Have you got any other? Phil, well, thank you, Richard. So at our, so what you're saying, at our next meeting, at our official meeting on Thursday night, we're gonna have those prices and numbers together, where we can go ahead and, and get the, get the bid process in for those three companies, Advanced Environmental, CCR, and Fox Engineering?
Advanced Environmental is fairly limited in the sense that they were stretching themselves to complete water quality monitoring at the one site. And so, CCR Environmental has, has put in a proposal so that they can adequately complete the monitoring at both sites, which is needed per state EPD. And so that we can have withdrawal permits and, and other things that are pretty much standard on an annual basis, or, you know, every so often, every so many years, to renew those through state EPD. And so, the default is CCR Environmental on Thursday, January 21st, for $16,490 for the two sites. And this is for an annual contract. So, even if Fox Environmental does not submit a bid this year because of the tight timeframe, they are aware that they can submit in December. And then, if there's some savings to be had, January 2017, you know, we're, we're always looking to, to save taxpayers.
If, when, when we vote on this thing on the 21st, I'm gonna take him to get the equipment in the creek there at Lower Daddy Mill, get that operational. Have you got any idea at this time?
I'll ask Christian Crowe with CCR Environmental.
All right.
Well, how much, how much was cost on the monitoring of the landfill? That wasn't, that wasn't configured?
No. Advanced Environmental has been, been monitoring the landfill ever since the closure, and even previous, before the closure up there on Jones Mountain Road. They go back probably into the 90s, I guess, don't they, John?
A long time, yeah. Much later than 90s.
And their cost, I don't, Phil, you remember what their cost is, what we pay them to monitor the, the dump sites up there?
There's a quarterly cost, it's about $385, I think, but then there's, I think there's maybe semi-annual reports, additional reporting that costs a little bit more. I don't know the exact numbers.
I do know, but we've gotta get up there, if this rain will ever give us a break, we gotta get up there and, and put in a little access road around the backside of one of the dump sites to put in another monitoring well.
We gotta put another monitoring well in, fix one well, it's a robed and up for the capsule, and clean out both sedimentation ponds.
The water department, in the last few years, has been keeping it. We gotta keep a bush off, clean, get the trees off of it that time. The water department's been, been doing that about, about twice a year. Keep the sites all cleaned off because of, of EPD and all that. Keep a check on these dump sites that we've got, that we've gotta maintain for the, I guess, the rest of our life, I guess, for, for lack of a better story.
But we're not including that in this?
No.
That's why.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, that is not part of the, part of this. What, what Richard's talking about is for, for clean water. Clean water, not, not monitoring dump sites. Anybody else got any? That pretty well handles everything we've got. Anybody else got any questions or comments? Richard?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, I appreciate your time on the issue of building permits, in terms of the transition with environmental health. As some of y'all know, environmental health here for Pickens County has had two staff members. They're down to one at this time. The, the one Jan Stevens employee, after many years of service, is retiring January 29th. And the new replacement for her has not been hired. And unfortunately, due to whatever circumstances, the interview for one or more people will not be until January 28th. And therefore, we don't know when the new person will actually be in the office, in place, and, and be, you know, up to speed on looking at sites for telling, planning and development that a building permit can be issued based on the availability of septic and per test and, and everything like that. Therefore, we're, you know, especially like in February, there, there's gonna be this, this time where we don't want to have a, you might say, moratorium on building. We wanna have people be able to build houses or move in mobile homes. And so, we'll, we'll just have to work with Mr. Jones and environmental health and others to figure out a transition way.
I will be, yeah, I had forgot that, that had come to my attention this morning. I will be in touch with, with Jan Stevens' supervisor out of Dalton Office to see how we can handle this, if they can get somebody on staff and get Jan, get them trained up before, before she leaves. But, yeah, the way, the way the permitting works at Pickens County and other counties throughout the state, we cannot actually give a permit until they get a septic tank or a per test permit. So, we're, we're kind of hinged on what the state will let them do on the property. It'd be bad to give somebody a building permit, then come to find out that they can't use the property because it doesn't pass per test.
Do we know why the interviews are delayed?
Don't, don't know. That's state.
Oh, so that's the state.
That's state. Yeah, we have to get, we have to get septic tank permits and per test from the state before then we can issue a, a permit for building.
Have we suggested to them that they might try to contract with Jan for an extra month? 30 days or something?
That, that's a possibility. I will talk to her supervisor out of Dalton and see how they're planning on, if they can't get somebody here and hit the ground running, how, what, what do we do for this point? Richard, right to the fact that I don't wanna do more forums, because now the Congress start to pick back up. Last thing on, do shut, shut down. Now, that being said, as long as you're going on city sewer, within the city, we don't have any control of that. And they would be ready to go. But now, if they're, even somebody's gonna be building inside the city, it's gotta go on septic tank. They're gonna face the same issue we are. So, as long as they stay on city sewer, they'll do fine. So, we don't wanna just do a blanket boycott on, on building permits right now, but...
And they could take longer than 30 days, if you think about it in their process. So, if we could contract with Jan or something, month by month.
Well, it's out of our, it's out of our purview, because she worked, she worked for the state. But I will, I will get into, me and, me and Richard will get into Jan's supervisor over out of, out of the Dalton Office, see how they plan on, on getting it. Because I was in the depression, they had two individuals already hired, and obviously that has not been the case, or something happened, didn't work out. So, those lies of that this morning. So, but as, did you talk to Jan this morning, does she?
The latest, right, is that the interview for two potential candidates to fill her position as the, the head of Pickens County Environmental Health would be January 28th.
Well, that, that being said, take, take septic tanks and per tests out of the picture. How are they doing restaurants?
I mean, you also mentioned that, you know, because there's two positions historically. One person who would do more septic, one person who would do more food service. On January 28th, if they have a really good interview and they, you know, give somebody, they hire somebody, and they're gonna start in a week or two after that, or, or a month after that, it could be just somebody who's familiar with one of those two components. So, they may just have to do the best they can and try to cover both, or, or something else. We just don't know.
Okay. I'll, I'll be, me and Richard will be in touch with, with her supervisor this week.
Mr. Chairman, can we talk a little bit about Tatum Makers? We got a copy of the noise ordinance, and can we go over that? Have Richard to go over that a little bit?
Sure. Talk about the nuisance ordinance?
Uh-huh. The nuisance.
Yeah. I don't think there'd be a, be an issue just to get us all abreast of this. What she's, what Ms. Dennis talking about, there is a nuisance ordinance of Pickens County that's been on the books since, since 2010. I'll be glad to share a copy with anyone here. It is on public record. It's Section 42-2 under disorderly conduct. But if you read these all the way down to number 18, I think, Phil, you had got a copy of it. We're just trying to come up, kind of think out of box on this wedding venue, because whatever we do there is gonna affect the whole county. And we are getting some comments, pro and against putting any more ordinances in place, most against. So, we're trying to think out of the box, you know, maybe this might work. What you're, what do y'all feel about, you know, just, just some ideas trying to think of, this time to get for conversation?
You're correct in that what we've received is nine out of 10 calls or face-to-face folks coming in our office, because we have not received emails. Most people, you know, they, they just wanna talk to us about it, and ask questions, and make comments. And nine out of 10 have said that 50 people is, is too small a number, that there are a lot of family reunions and house parties and other things, where it, it might start out as a 30 or 40-person event, and it turns into easily 50 or 60 or 70. Or, it may intentionally be planned out as a 50 or 60 or 70-person event. But we've received calls and had people come into our office and say, you know, "I just don't feel like," and, and these people are Pickens County residents, they're saying that they don't feel like that they should have to get a permit to have a party for 60 people. And then, we've also had people, I would say, you know, also ask about the fee, because they're also saying, "Okay, well, if you're gonna require that we get a permit to have a party, then, you know, if it's for a nonprofit fundraiser, say, as an example, you're taking $100 out of the pot of money that goes to a charity, or goes to, you know, a good cause, Toys for Tots, or something like that." And, let's see. Those, those were the two main things, that 50 people, the threshold was too low. That, we received the, the most calls about that, that it needed to be at least 100 people or more, or that it needed to be done away with, that we don't even need a, a permit to begin with. And then, also, that the fee was just not needed.
Right. And that, that was put in the paper was a, was a talking symbol. It wasn't something we were just gonna act upon that day. So, people, you know, everybody, you know, we can't, we can't meet unless we're in items like this right here. So, what was put in the paper was just a talking item. But it was something we're trying to discuss out, see how we can come to some sort of resolution on the dilemma that some of them are having in certain areas of the county. The calls that I've been getting is, you know, let it go. So, I, you know, we're still, we're still looking. I'm still trying to think out of the box. This, this right here, what we, what's in there, already in the ordinance, that was done in 2010, pretty well would cover anything that's been questioned out there. So, it, pardon?
Let, let me ask you a little bit. Y'all, y'all have an opportunity to review the record, and you've really got two issues in front of you. One is the, the rezoning request, or the, or the request for a conditioning use permit to be issued to landowners. You have a recommendation for planning commission that you really probably need to act on in January, shortly thereafter, whether or not to accept their recommendation, deny their recommendation, or accept it with modifications. Secondary to that, or, or the issues raised in that, not secondary to that, but contemporaneously with that. I'm not saying one's more important than the other. But through that process, you have also become aware of the issues associated with this type of venue, wedding venue, hit a conference, or whatever else. And I, and I think the initial directive to Richard and to myself was to fashion a way to, to regulate that activity, to deal with the concerns raised by the members of the public in that, in that fee, even though it doesn't necessarily bear a lot of potato farms. It does, you know, you are, you are wanting to address the concerns raised. The thing with the chairman that's suggesting is that, his review of that record shows that the majority of those concerns were based upon loud noises late at night. And if those could be eliminated, could the majority of the, of the, of the concerns associated with wedding meetings be eliminated? And when you look at number nine, I'm sorry, number six, I can't see, in that, in that ordinance?
Yeah.
That, I think is, you're, I think what the chairman's proposing is, is that, do y'all feel like that is sufficient to deal with the concerns raised by the members of the public in that hearing, as well as deal with the, the very good permit application that, that Richard's put together there? And, and as long as we've got it out on the table, if y'all also wanna talk about that rezoning request, we can look at that as well. I think y'all, I talked to the three of y'all individually, but I, I think y'all need to prepare and take some action on that in your January 1st plan.
Well, what, you've already mentioned the, the options that we have. If we, if we decide not to go by the recommendations of the planning commission, and just let the state pass, and use this as enforcement arm of anybody doing anything, is that, is that reasonable?
That would be, I mean, what, what concerns do y'all, that the three of you see is raised by your review of that, of that record? And if you believe that the majority of those concerns revolve around noise, revolve around noise at inappropriate hours, then can this, can this be used to, to deal with that type of events, as opposed to any regulation, reform regulation?
With the zoning issue still have to be voted upon to give Ms. Tatum the ability to hold the weddings, is that?
Yes.
You're saying we need to address that?
She has asked for that, under her perzon of agriculture. We don't allow for, there's a very good way, conditions are not allowed in that. With that claims classification, she's asked for a mission use permit to, to hold weddings and conferences there.
So, the way to go would either be the permit, which I agree with you is very good that Richard came up with, or to go ahead and do the rezoning?
Well, that, and that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm concerned about. There are two separate issues, and they don't need to be intermingled anymore than we have to. They're the two separate issues. One is, is a property owner's right to do what he, what she can or cannot do if her property is regulated by the government. And then, the other, which is separate in the stink from that, but it, but it evolves from those conversations, from that hearing, are what are the communities concerned with regards to these types of venues? And do those concerns need, do, does the government need to regulate those, need to put regulation in place to deal with those concerns, or does it already have adequate regulation already in place that needs to be enforced or, or, or used?
So, if we, if we vote to change her zoning, the zoning of that property, then they could go ahead and hold their events and so forth? What's in place is this that would apply to their events?
And if, and if a landowner is concerned about noise at inappropriate hours, like all the sheriff's department and have ordinance violation that's addressed?
Right. So, it would, you know, it would essentially be a level playing field for all businesses, in the sense that if a, if a neighbor at midnight is, is close enough to the Bane and Goat, the Tate House, Tatum Farms, if Tatum Farms is granted approval to operate a business, or any other business, you know, Sharp's Vineyard, and at midnight, they call the sheriff's department, you know, and says, you know, "We got disorderly conduct going on, you know, it's too loud." Or, you know, for whatever reason. I mean, because the last number 18, you know, any person who commits any act against public safety, morality, decency, or who exhibits any other conduct that is disorderly, that tends to disturb any persons anywhere in the county. So, essentially, any business, I mean, right now, that can, that can be used as a complaint. And so, it, it would be, again, kind of a level playing field for just all businesses.
So, in your mind, do you see this as, as strong enough, or do you see that we do need more as far as the permitting? Because the calls I'm getting, they would just, from around Pickens County, they would prefer that we just do nothing as far as the, they do not like the permitting idea, for the reasons that you just mentioned?
Yeah, it's, it's gotten intermingled, and, and that's, that's been a challenge, and it would be a challenge in enforcement, because people are, are saying, "Okay, businesses are businesses." And, I mean, they're wanting to make money, they're wanting to operate. So, if there's a problem with that, then that's fine. But with a nonprofit that's trying to raise money- But with a nonprofit that's trying to raise money for, for a good cause or for a private individual that wants to have a family reunion on their land and wants to have 50 or 60 people, a lot of calls we've received have said, those are two very different things. And so, you know, maybe, you know, Pickens County needs to just look at businesses and have the ability, if there's, you know, a true disorderly conduct going on at a business at midnight or whenever, then, you know, they ought to be potentially shut down. But if it's somebody's private party, it, you know, it ought to be looked at differently. Now, it, it could have the same thing on it, but we, we've just received numerous calls saying an additional layer of regulation would not help things.
And I guess that's the question with there is the balance between the intrusiveness of government and, and the, and the regulation of government for, for offensive hours.
So at this next meeting, one option would be that we could vote for a zoning change but leave what's in place?
And not deal with the permit.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if you do vote, if you, when y'all deal with the, with the Tatum rezoning vote, realize there are three, you have three categories. One is to deny, just to completely disagree with the planning commission. The other is to grant exactly what the planning commission gave. And I've, I've told the three of y'all I have issues with that. I mean, I, I think that some of the conditions that are imposed by the planning commission are going to be difficult, if not impossible, to enforce. And we're looking at a property line as opposed to a, something who, something that is attached to the land. And so it might be that y'all would approve the planning commission's recommendations without those special conditions that they've recommended because of the, your perception that they are difficult or impossible to enforce.
Based on public input or for whatever reason, the actual text amendment for the special event permit, that's a text amendment submitted by staff. That can be withdrawn at any time if the elected officials see fit, or it can move forward to planning commission on Monday. And then obviously they could, they could recommend it forward or just, you know, recommend it denial.
Yeah, but with your recommendation to, to Richard today, he can just withdraw that from submitting a planning commission.
Any further questions to that? I think it's been a while trying to get this little issue here worked out, but maybe we're getting to some sort of, some sort of conclusion to it. Angela?
So I think I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Therefore, on the January 21st agenda, will the board be making the decision on the rezoning, conditional use on Tatum Farms? Because I think the time limit is on.
Yes. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we'll be making the decision. Jared, you got anything else?
I know you've got a brief overview of the storm damage stuff or anything.
So far, if you remember, the heads up on it, we've got, as of yesterday, the meeting we had with Jima, it's, it's right now, it's a little over $50,000, the damage that we've had so far. Now, we're fixing to start on Price Creek and Sutton Road on Monday, which there'll be some more added to that, try to get those roads back up. Now, the, the roads are passable, but we've just got to do some maintenance to them, clean the ditches out. We've got to regravel some rock for the, for the rivers, keep from eating our pipes out, those type of issues. What we've done with the Leaven roads that we've had down, we have replaced just about every bit of the pipe to a bigger size, since the road was already washed out anyway, the ditch is already there, we just had to dress it up and just lay pipe in there. So we went to a bigger size. What's cooked along here on these last two roads was the fact that couldn't buy the pipe during Christmas holidays, New Year's, everything was shut down, so we were scrambling. But we've got, only road we have down at this particular time is Dean Mill. And if everything goes according to plan, we should have it completely operational by Thursday evening. Did you have time to check?
I went over and checked this morning unless something happens.
Yeah.
They were waiting on a little bit more dirt. It should be open by this afternoon.
So that's the last one we've got. Now, that's not all the damage. We've still got to go back and dress up satellite roads and ditch lines and this, all these logs and stuff that's come out of the, come out of the woods to fill everything back up again. But, and I think, I think Talking Rock has got, hopefully, they're putting some numbers together on the damage that they've had down.
They put some numbers together, FEMA called back, not FEMA, Jima called back yesterday afternoon, like, we turned in totals, it's right at $300,000 bucks, or the projection of what it's going to take to clean it up.
Now, we had a, and that being said, an individual called me this morning, he was called from a, from an individual over in Tornia, Georgia, that had a meeting from the representative from the governor's office. The, they want to have the, they called us to see if we could send them some numbers by Monday night or Tuesday morning, because they want to take our numbers to go with the numbers from over there and meet with this governor's representative to see if possibly there could be some money, money there to, to help reimburse the counties or the cities that had damage during this, during this thing. So we're still trying to, trying to come up with a plan, a grant, something to help, help reimburse the counties and cities on the damage that we've occurred, or have occurred during all this heavy rain. Anybody know, Roy, you know anything else going on? I know you've been out sick. Do you know anything else happening?
Yes, it is a real chore for everybody, the low-lying areas, cattle producers with fences, things of that nature. You really can't get around most of these properties still. The ground is just so saturated, you literally cannot drive in and out to do things. But just tough for everybody, everybody's working together and thank the county for keeping the roads open. You got to have them to get in and out to your house.
Ms. Fay, you got anything going on in the financial end? Are things looking good on your end?
Everything's good.
John, you, Richard?
No, they did tell, I was at Jima headquarters yesterday, and the director Butterworth made an announcement like what you referred to, there might be some state money coming from the governor. Not going to be a huge pot. They also are not totally convinced that once the water starts going down in South Georgia, they're still flooded, that we might make the $14 million threshold for the whole state. They don't expect it, but there is a slim hope that we would get a federal declaration by the end of the month. But it's slim.
Yeah, okay. For 14 million is the breaking point?
For the whole state, yeah.
I do have one question related to this. A lot of these creek areas, we now are finding tires that we did not know were there before. They're kind of washed up and down. Does the county have a place where if we run across these, that we can bring them to the recycling center or anything? Do we have any depositories for things like that?
Yeah, it's called Gilmore County. Just take them, don't put that in there. Yeah, we've, tires, we have got a, in our recycling area there in front of the combat camp, we can accept tires there. Normally, we charge $2 apiece to bring them in there. We have to, county has to pay $2 apiece. On the other hand, we have noticed that there has been a group of individuals, we haven't been able to nail them, but we're going to eventually, that are bringing cars in here, either on a half-ton truck or a one-ton, and at night, driving around to areas in the county that aren't traveled as much and throwing tires off the back of the truck into ditch lines. The sheriff has been notified to that point. It happened some time ago, a couple of years ago, starting again. So we've been monitoring, trying to see if we can catch these individuals. Well, I think we accepted what, 23, 24 tires here last week for an area that had got dumped on. So we'll work with somebody if they get, they get hit up. At least, so flood like that, we just clean the woods out, didn't we?
So, and the creek too.
And it's all creek, yeah. Phil, you got anything?
If you need any bridge timbers, I bet a few live.
Yeah, I'm just glad that we were fortunate enough that nobody got injured, hurt. And do you have any, was there any property, property loss up here, John?
Not that I'm aware of. People needed some aid were referred to the Red Cross.
Okay. So, nice. Well, I don't have anything, unless somebody else has got a question, I don't have anything. Well, thank y'all for being here. Let's look towards a, a very prosperous new year coming up. Thank y'all. The Sweden's now closed.